As is our custom, we will have our road call by introducing the members of our town council and our staff. My immediate right is our Mayor Pro Tem, Sandra Locke, followed by Councilman Ed Smith, and by Councilman Fred Franklin. To my left is Councilman Robert Green, Councilman Tom Lawson, and Councilman Jeff Zinger. We have our town manager with us tonight to help conduct our meeting, Mr. Hank Perkins. We have our town attorney, Will Hough. We have our town clerk, Ms. Joyce Walker. We have our assistant town manager and finance director, Kathy Bruce. Well, we welcome all to tonight's meeting, and I will mention that also our meeting tonight is being filmed for rebroadcast on Channel 6, starting, I think, this next Monday night at 7:00 PM. And I think it's going to air each night, but we get that at the same time, if I'm not mistaken. So, we do welcome those citizens that are going to join us through the video rebroadcast. With that, we have, next item will be the adoption of tonight's agenda. I think we had at least one add-on.
Yes, sir. We do have an amendment to a capital projects ordinance, and I would want to ask Ms. Bruce to explain a little bit on that.
Thank you, Rick Hall. As you recall, during our retreat this month, one of the items that we discussed was the playground over at Jack Warren Park, and we wanted to expand that. The board, it was consensus vote for it that we moved forward with that project, and so to expedite things this evening, you'll have ordinance, amending the ordinance on that capital project originally named as maintenance facility, Jack Warren Park, to include the playground expansion. And so, this is the technical thing that you have to pass with the budgetary amendments included inside of that to move forward with that playground expansion. We did have some quotes on also that we have for a limited number of days, so we would like to expedite that.
That will be, at which point in the, on the agenda?
That will be added to new business, item D.
Okay. Very good. But the motion to approve the agenda?
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, we have an agenda for tonight's session, and we will start with our consent agenda of our town manager.
This evening, we have three items on the consent agenda. The first is Resolution 2013-005. This is the acceptance and approval of the monthly financials for December 2012. Next item is the approval of council briefing and action minutes from January 3, 2013. And the third item is the approval of council regular meeting minutes from January 10, 2013.
Councilors, are there any questions of the town manager on any of the items that are, that make up the consent agenda for tonight's meeting? What's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Go ahead, a second. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes. The next item.
Okay, the next item is under presentations and proclamations. Under consent proclamations, we have proclamation 2013-001. This is for Forsyth County Creek Week. We have for us, for explanation and presentation this evening, and any questions, Mr. Chester Patterson.
Okay. Mr. Patterson did cover this, this item in our briefing, I think, quite thoroughly, so if, do we have any questions of him at this time, from anyone? If not, I'll read the proclamation for your consideration. This is proclamation 2013-001, supporting the Forsyth Creek Week, which will be March 16 through the 23rd of 2013. Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, art protection, and support for our economy and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas any measure of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth, and diversity, productivity, and public safety are in some way related to access to safe water. And whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend. And whereas each citizen of our community is called upon to help protect our source, our water sources from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues. Now therefore be it resolved that by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of our city, I do hereby proclaim March 16 through the 23rd, 2013, Forsyth Creek Week. Given under my hand and seal, this date. Entertained a motion for approval, unless there's other questions or comments?
Motion approved, proclamation 2013-001.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Proclamation approved. Next item?
The next item is under presentations, and there are none this evening. And then next, the item on the agenda is public forum.
This is the first of two opportunities that we have in each one of our regular meetings for anyone from the public to address council on any subject matter. Maybe something that is on tonight's agenda, or it could be something that's just important enough that a citizen would want to address council concerning it. What we asked is if anyone would like to address council at this time, they come forward to the microphone, they state their name and their address. We ask that you do limit your comments to three minutes, and would remind the public that we're here to listen to the issue as you proclaim, and we would not necessarily address or respond to your comments at this time. Is there anyone that would like to address council at this time? Having no one to come forward, we do have forums at the back of the chamber that are a way of addressing through written comments your issues, if you'd like to pursue that way. So, if no participation, we will close the public forum and go to the next item of business.
Okay, the next item of business is purchases and contracts. There are none for consideration this evening. The next section, board and committee appointments. There are none this evening as well. And under whole business, there is no whole business for consideration this evening. The next section is public hearings. We do have a public hearing scheduled for this evening. It is ordinance 2013-004. This would be a public hearing for UDA case L 141, amending access management by encompassing areas in the town other than the downtown. There will be staff presentation as well.
I think Mr. Myers is going to conduct the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At each of your places, prior to the meeting, I put out a sort of checklist sheet that summarizes those sections of the ordinance that have been amended to create a townwide policy for driveway connections. And as you can see, most of the changes were not significant in that they were all front-loaded there, pretty much in the general requirements section, which establishes the scope and the parameter for this ordinance. A little later in the ordinance, however, we do, we did add several paragraphs on the residential driveway standards, which do create a standard for future driveways to be located out beyond the town core. And we also changed a table, Table B3.122, which lists those minimum criteria and spacing requirements that were found within the text, the driveway section. I will entertain any questions that you folks might have. I guess in a bit of a summary, as we did at the briefing meeting last week, when the planning board undertook this, the writing of this ordinance back in 2009, we, I think, had an intention initially to have a townwide driveway ordinance, but as we started to establish minimum design criteria, our focus became more and more to the standards that would be important and needed along Shellerford Road and within the downtown core. So, unintentionally, I guess we wrote an ordinance that specifically addressed driveways within the downtown core, and this is an effort on behalf of the planning board and then this council to change the scope and have it be townwide.
So, this would really only affect new building permits?
Right. It's not retroactive if you have an existing driveway that was built to a standard that might have been approved or established by the DOT along the DOT road. This would not impact that or affect that.
And is it going to affect, and we've got some places where we have fields that have driveway accesses for farm equipment and stuff, none of that is going to be impacted as well?
Well, what we attempted to do there, Mr. Zinger, was to write, I believe, the paragraph that addresses temporary drives as section 3 dash 3.7A7, which establishes and sets forth conditions and criteria for temporary driveways. And that was a point that was looked at long and hard, not only by the planning board, but by the subcommittee of the planning board that's charged with overseeing and reviewing our work. And I think what we've attempted to do is to come up with a process whereby if you are a farmer or someone who has an agricultural driveway, you can continue to use that driveway. It's a seasonal driveway, it's a seasonal driveway, it's understood that it's low volume, and you can continue to have it. If there was an amendment or something that was needed, if it was a thought, if there was a thought that this particular field or fields would not be tended to, and the driveway would need to be relocated for whatever purpose, there is a thought that they would come in and let us know that, but George or myself would review it, and without, there's not a permit process for that, even though there is a review. We feel like we've accommodated those folks, given the unusual nature of that driveway. It's not like a typical driveway, it's just seasonal, and it's very low volume.
And George being the other works director?
Correct, George Howser, Public Works Director.
I'd just like for you to clarify, what do you think is seasonal?
Planting. If it's planted this year for a crop, and the next year it's not planted, the driveway could still be there. It would not be impacted, it would be allowed to stay. And it's location.
But if you're, if you have a drive currently, that the only thing that goes in and out of it is a tractor?
That's exactly what we're talking about.
Yeah, but it's year-round.
It would stay there year-round, we wouldn't require it.
That's the reason I just want to clarify, your terminology is seasonal. You thought it was from May to September, or whatever, you know?
Exactly. And where the standards would become a little more particular and involved would be where you have situations where a logging operation, which does typically have a lot of, it's or has heavy equipment coming in and out, we particularly want to make sure that they know where those are, and they do, they do come in and they do go away, or they do get relocated or moved. But I know we, in working with the NCDOT folks on this, they're particularly attentive to those as well. They have special standards that are above and beyond ours, whether it's flagging and other things required for logging operations, but it would affect those. New construction, if you have like a construction easement or construction access for a new site, it's understood that it's temporary, it goes away, may not be the permanent access for that property, but it would need to be looked at or reviewed just the same.
And I apologize for asking this question, I should probably, you should already know it, but if I were going to build a new single dwelling facility somewhere, I needed an access, is there a fee associated with the town to do that?
Right, it's a $45 fee.
Okay, then, why would we be charging $45 to, I mean?
That's already in the fee schedule, and I don't know that I recall when the conversation's exact, I think it's to cover basically a staff time, going out there to look at, visit the site, come back in, look at drawings, contact the builder, whoever's doing the work, just in just ready back this. And that fee is in keeping with what Clemens and other jurisdictions are doing around us.
Clemens is this $45?
I think it is.
Marty, a question?
Yes, sir.
What kind of discussion took place, if any, regarding our street standards?
Explain.
At the onset, at the onset of talking about pursuing a driveway or access management outside of the downtown, one of the things that we've had some issues with over the years is, there's a recognition on part of the county that if a driveway cut is made off of a town road, that those roads have to meet the town's street standards.
That's in the, that's in the ordinance now, maybe.
But what's happened is, if we had a situation where we had a development occur a few years ago off Lewisville Vienna Road, and even though that road was in the town, the position at that time was, well, that's not a town road, it's a DOT road, so therefore, this project does not have to meet the Lewisville standards as if it would, as it would if it were off of a, what we mean, a town street. So, we were looking for an avenue to try to see if driveway cut standard could compel that to occur.
This will give us a place at the table to have some input. If it's a situation like you mentioned, where the development itself is in the county, but the road connection is actually made within our jurisdiction, or along a road that may be town maintained, or in another case, state maintained, it allows us still to review that driveway application, or in, I guess, the case of a subdivision road, a subdivision road application. What it doesn't do, however, because this is a public safety ordinance and not a land use ordinance, it doesn't allow us to expand our purview and go out beyond the scope of just what the driveway criteria will be. If the road is going to be wholly located within the county's jurisdiction, then the county's UDO, their UDO standards would still apply to create the type of road that would be mandated by the county's requirements. We can only do the driveway connection to our roadway. It just really comes down to jurisdiction, and this is a public safety ordinance, and we can't, we can't assign responsibility or standards for areas that are outside the scope of the town, or outside the town's jurisdiction.
But Tom, it does apply townwide, irrespective of whether the driveway access is on the DOT road, or a town, or a town.
You know, we talked about the issue of, you know, I don't assume, one of the paragraphs here talks about it, access to a street that is approved by the town as being in compliance with town standards, and/or is currently maintained by, you know, I think one of the questions we talked about earlier in the audience here was, you know, could somebody go out and do a dirt road and want to connect to, you know, do we have the ability to say, well, our standard is, we don't allow a road to connect onto this road that's within the town unless it meets our standard to be an acceptable road? The other part of this was, someone, we talked about with these maintenance issues, if a road that doesn't meet our standards gets a driveway cut, and then later on, folks want to bring that road into the town, then we get back into the same type of discussion we've even had recently in regard to roads.
Which, with this ordinance, as I mentioned, as a public safety ordinance, it really just allows George or myself, or anyone else we might tap for, or their consultation or added information, it just allows us to make sure that someone doesn't inappropriately locate a drive in an unsafe condition or situation, which we really haven't had that authority to do townwide before. And I think at the briefing, I used as an example where we've had, over the years, town maintained streets that have been connected to by any number of developers or builders, and because there hasn't been a driveway permit process, for one, we don't even know, because they go straight down to the county to get their permits, we don't really know when they initiate construction, or if they've initiated construction, or what type it is, or whatever. And what we've seen happen, although thankfully, not to a great extent, but it has happened, they will make a driveway approach to the street that's either too steep, or they don't adequately handle the stormwater that will be coming or shedding off that concrete or asphalt drive. It gets into the street's road right of way and creates a puddle, which in the summertime could be a hazard situation, and it's ponding, and calls folks to hibernate, or in the wintertime, even worse, it could be an ice spot. And so, you know, our thought is that if we had had some consultation with that builder early on, we would have advised him to put some type of drain system, or catch basin or something there, or maybe even just valley it out and shut the water, you know, cram it, so it goes one way or the other, so it doesn't create an adverse situation for the town or for folks using that roadway. Another thing that this ordinance does, as I indicated last Thursday, it also requires that a builder come by and speak with us prior to initiating new construction. That hasn't always been the case, in fact, it's never been the case, where like, a builder agrees to, or is contracted to build on a particular lot. Typically, in the past, they've just simply gone down to city-county planning, and they've drawn their permits, and like I said, we find out about it by, you know, being out and about, and just happy to see that there's activity on a particular parcel of a lot. They will, as part of this, be directed by the county staff to come out to town of Lewisville and get a driveway permit prior to construction.
The driveway permit fee in Clemens is $30. I have a question on the section here for the driveway, for the temporary drives, I looked up. It says temporary driveways for bona fide farm activities may be permitted for up to five years. So, are we saying with this that at the end of five years, we can go around and, I mean, go after these, I mean, are these guys going to end up, it says, let me go on further, it says up to five years. It is used seasonally and is not amended, such permits may be renewed as directed by Public Works. So, are all these farm fields going to, farmers going to have to come in here and get a permit? A five-year temporary driveway permit for a driveway that's been used for the last 50 years? Is that what we're looking at?
That was our thought. That was new language that we added just as recently, as within the last month or so, and it was due to a concern that was shared with us by members of the planning subcommittee, that they felt it unnecessary, perhaps even overreaching, to have them come in every year to reestablish that permit. And that certainly could be modified. If you folks feel like that five years is not a long enough time, then it needs to be longer than that, or?
I feel like they should be left alone. That's my, that ought to establish.
Well, do we have any idea of how many that we may be talking about?
Well, those are fewer than I wrote. They occur mostly in the whole.
Limited number, I would say.
It is, there's, Mr. Franklin probably has, has been a handle on it as anyone, because he has several himself, but they are, they're just, they're low volume, seasonal drive by seasonal, I mean, they're planting season types of things, for mostly just farming equipment to get onto and off those lands for the farming activity that is conducted there. And that really was one of the hardest things to try to address with this. You can draw, logging, we know what we're going to do with it, we know what we're going to do with access for construction sites and utility crossings where they might be need to get on a right way for logging or whatever, but farming is hard.
I agree, there'd be a limited number, but you know, there's one farmer in particular that farms a lot of these, and I can see him having to come in here and get eight permits to do this, I just don't, that stuff's been existing forever, and obviously, as things develop, they'll go away, and we'll have our site plan approval and our driveway permits then, I just feel like that should be left.
I thought earlier you addressed that this would not, they'd be grandfathered, so to speak. Would that apply to these also?
Right, well, the ones that, and that does apply, there are existing driveways out there that this would not apply to, this would be for those driveways, those temporary drives that would be created after the adoption of this ordinance. And who knows how many that would be? I mean, probably fewer than.
That would address that?
Yeah, that would address it, but I don't think that's what it says. I don't see. I've got it here in front, it says, it says, "The Public Works Director may grant temporary street and driveway permits for the construction and operation of access connections to town roadways and roadways made by NCDOT for specific periods of time. Temporary permits will clearly indicate that the access connections are temporary and are to be removed by the applicant at the end of the specified time period. Performance lines and other indemnity may be required to ensure the proper removal of these access, of the access and restoration of the right of way. Examples and types are included, but are not limited to farm operations, utilities, site construction assets, logging operations. Temporary access should meet the minimum required design, site distance, and general placement criteria."
And I guess the thing is, is that mine doesn't say grandfathered in on this existing farms, field serving farm and stuff. It says they can come in and get a temporary five-year permit.
Okay, said temporary, temporary permit shall expire one year upon approval of strategic occupancy. As the model 17 Forsyth came, especially with new construction, renovations are the reason for the initial issuance of temporary driveway permit. Temporary permits for bona fide farm activities may be permitted up to five years if the driveway is issued seasonally and is not amended. So, I guess that's what the implied is there, at least as I read it, Mr. Zinger, is that it would be for new, new temporary agricultural driveways that are permitted after the adoption of this ordinance, but then they would not be looked at nor touched if left alone, and as they are for five years. And then if the driveway is still there after a five-year period, and is still intended to be used as it was previously designed, then there may need to be a permit for the re-issuance of that for another five years, kind of like what the county does with mobile homes.
That would be a change, I think, doesn't just talk about, you got somebody who's out there now with an existing, he doesn't, I think what he's saying is, five years goes by, and a guy who's had six of these things for the last 20 years is now in a position where he's got to start carrying out a process that up to this point, he did not have to carry out in order to maintain those cuts.
And I just don't see it specifically, I feel like it's a little bit vague, and it doesn't specifically say that existing farm or agricultural accesses are grandfathered in, it really talks, it just talks specifically about getting this permit, unless I'm missing something which is entirely possible.
Yeah, I feel like that should be retrained. We'll go back to the original general standards to see what we established, and see if it's a coverage of all driveways, which I think was the implied, that they're all grandfathered.
It's only by, right at the beginning, 3 dash 3.7A is where it suggests, but it doesn't say explicitly, and perhaps it could be made to do that, it says where the property used to be served by a driveway, which suggests that means it's what it is to come, but I think we could probably shore that up with a little language to just, within subsection A there at the end, we could put, "These requirements shall apply to, on new development and new accesses only," or something along those lines. That ought to be sufficient, I think.
Ensure that, make that clear.
I believe that was the intent.
I think that's, that was the intent all along, because we did the same within the existing driveway situation as it is downtown. We don't go out to actively regulate existing driveways unless there's an expansion or something new proposed for the construction, so that would certainly be in keeping with what we've been doing already to enforce this since 2009.
Well, I think we would need to either get to approval of majority of council for.
Well, certainly, I think you'll leave a public hearing, and you get to the discussion stage, and just keep that in mind, and see whether that subject will counsel, or maybe we should include a motion. If there's a motion approved, it may, you may want to include the language that says, add the language we discussed concerning applicability only to new driveways and new accesses. And I'm certainly, planning board, is supportive of any language that would make that more clear, and establish that, shorten up, if you will, you said.
Okay. Any other questions of the planner before we go into the public hearing? Thank you, Marty. Appreciate that. This time, we will open the public hearing for UDA case L 141, amending access management encompassing areas in the town other than the downtown. So, like our public forum, what we ask in the public hearing is that if anyone wishes to comment. to comment for or against this amendment, that you come forward to the microphone, that you state your name, your address, and hopefully can limit your comments to no longer than a three-minute period. Do we have anyone at this time that would like to address council as part of the public hearing on this amendment to the UDO? Having no takers, we'll close the public hearing and then continue our council discussion. There's been brought up some concern that, that I guess current access is not grandfathered in all cases. I don't know if that may be an over simplification of it, but I think we need to hear from council as to what the desire council has held is concerning that.
I would agree with what Jeff is saying. I'd like to see the language redone and have that brought back to us to take a look at.
Well, we couldn't just give instructions to incorporate that change into the.
Yeah, but you've gone this far. I think there's some advantage to actually seeing the finished document as opposed to trying to do it on the fly.
What's the opinion of others?
From having sat on the committee, that paragraph is the only one that is the sticking block, and it has been the sticking block all along. So I'd rather see us come up with a conclusion instead of it tonight than send it back to keep fighting and battling over that paragraph.
Paul, would you suggest you sending it back to the planning board? I'm suggesting having Bo take what we're talking about here tonight and actually put that into verbiage and then let us take a look at what he comes to us with. And then, you know, I prefer to do it that way as opposed to not having a finished product in front. But I agree with you. I don't think this is a back to planning board thing. I think this is a back to Bo and Marty.
For crafting just the grandfather?
Yeah, to rewrite the paragraph.
Just grandfather.
To talk about what we're discussing here tonight. And your group meets again on the twenty-first, I believe.
Next week.
Right. And we can have it by then and show it to.
Because that's, that's been the stumbling block.
It has been. I mean, obviously, it did change as recently as just a month or so ago based upon critiques that we got from their group.
Well, in this one paragraph, and I thought it was rather simplified or simple change, I don't see why we couldn't take action on it tonight. That's my opinion.
We could, but, you know, this isn't following your sword. We've been working on this for a couple of years at least, so.
That's my point exactly.
Yeah.
Mine too.
And Bo and I are agreeing, I think what we also want for is it brings clarity to the other standards that we have been enforcing since two thousand and nine here in the downtown. It's gonna shore that up and make that very clear to all that might use this ordinance in the future. It is a grandfathered situation if you already have a driveway.
Then it needs to be something saying that the new grandfathering clause for this is effective of two thousand and thirteen and not back to two thousand and nine.
Right. Well, I think we haven't affected any of this ordinance provision yet in this.
Other amendments?
Yeah, I guess what gets me is the five-year renewal. And I think it's already been indicated that if you, I'm sure you got to make a permit or a permit renewal, but that's another forty-five dollars if somebody were to cut. Put in some drainage tile to get into the field, if you will, and that follows into this new category. And they continuously farm it or harvest crop off that field, they got to come back and go through a permit renewal process, and that has got costs to them. Also, to be able to do that, to harvest that crop, if you will, is to get, you know, you got to pay forty-five dollars upfront. I mean, personally, I've got two bona fide farm entrances that basically all I run over is tractor. And one of them's actually put in by the DMT. Used to park a school bus there a few years ago. And they actually put the tile in, put the gravel in. The other one, there's, it goes to a house. And I'm sure that'd be considered a gravel driveway to a residence and wouldn't even, we wouldn't even be having this discussion here. That's how I get in and out to the fields, actually, go through that driveway and so forth. But that's my only sticky point here. I don't feel this whole ordinance over this point. Now, if we can somehow revisit this one point, I'm good with everything else. I mean, and I don't really have a whole lot hanging up on it after I've read it about three times, other than the fact of having to come back every five years to deal with the town. That's just adding more government on folks. And that's, that's my only point of.
Well, I don't think it's meant to be a revenue-producing.
No, but still, it's the process and the headache, Jeff. That's correct, Jeff.
What if it doesn't, doesn't require amendment? Because yours have been in how many years without amendment?
Been out of high school thirty-five, forty years, and I drove a school bus in high school.
And they're low, they're low volume, as you indicated, just basically used for tractors, farm equipment, nothing more, nothing less.
But, but the part about the logging and so forth, I fully understand that. Would like to see those provisions stay and so forth, but, and I understand the seasonal part of it, a company, a drill outfit comes in in the spring and a combine comes in in the fall, and maybe a sprayer in the middle of the season, control weeds and so forth. That's not a whole lot of traffic. So I'm not hung up on the seasonal part. I first thought that you were only saying seasonal with this. That's the reason I asked for clarification for that to start with.
If they're not amended, do we need to re-permit them? I guess that's the question. I'm sensitive to what you're suggesting.
There, if they're not amended, that's a part involved. Maybe that could be done in the enforcement piece without having to rewrite the whole, I mean, not the whole ordinance, but the seasonal ordinance.
Let's go back over that again. I may have missed parts of that. What part are we talking about in this?
We're still talking about the farm connection.
Just agricultural drive, which is minimal. I mean, sometimes they have tiles, sometimes they don't, depending on where they fall.
And if they're logging the tractor, obviously got the four and eighteen we were, and that's much different than everything. I think we need to know about those.
But do we, do we want to even know if a farm driveway goes in? Just have it advisory? Have them advise us that they're putting in one to a field and then we don't permit it?
I think there's, I think there's a difference though between somebody who comes in tomorrow who's never had any sort of access, and people Fred's talking about who've been out there and they've got these things in place, they've been using them for a while. Is that what you're talking about?
No, I, I, I mean, I just, if for whatever reason, you know, equipment changes for the farmers, they may have been coming in with a smaller piece to get into the field. They're trying to increase their efficiency, so now they're bringing in a larger piece that still travels down the roadway, you know, but they need a little more stuff. Do we need, even need to get involved with it? We're telling them that. That's, that's my point of contention, but.
Marty, didn't you just say though at the beginning of this, I'm sorry, that the whole ordinance itself was not retroactive? So if it's not retroactive, then it only applies to new.
New driveways.
No, everything else that's already there is good to go and they don't have to do this. Is that correct?
Saying specifically that they're grandfathered in and all of this goes away, if we can specifically just say existing. Because I see situations too where your drive gets washed out in the field and a guy comes and he fixes it up, or are we gonna have somebody in the town go around and say, hey, wait a minute, you modified it, you need permit.
Fred, Fred's just wants to be beyond grandfathered. He's saying that farmers, even the come in that wouldn't, that come in tomorrow.
I'm just, I guess what I'm getting at is the majority of the land that would be involved with farming in our township is land that is being rented by farmers that are typically out of Yadkin County. Now, how are we gonna expect farmers over there to know that we've got this ordinance in place? Why do we even need to be messable with that? I guess it's my point. I mean, you know, when they're just trying to get a piece of equipment into a field to plant or harvest the crop.
Is this, is this something for agriculture to be exempted?
Now, logging trucks and so forth, that's a different story. I'm waiting on that. We need, we need to know about that stuff.
Something like.
Fred, is most of the property, you think it's zone AG agricultural or something like ours?
I don't know. I haven't looked with maps yet. I venture the same, though.
I was asking Bo if there's a way we can exempt, you know, maybe agriculture exempt, you know, uses in AG or some sort of angle like that, so farmers.
Some of them, like Jeff's saying, there are as twenty, there are as forty, it's just however the property was designed. Ours was like RS twenty or RS forty. We're not AG, we're the AG of the county's eyes.
Well, we use.
I agree with what Fred's saying. I'm just looking for a way to get there. If you tell a bona fide farm is defined by the state, is that not perhaps an avenue to get at wherever we want to go? Because we use that language in the ordinance.
But I don't know for a guy that's leasing a field down the road here to put a crop on, he may have a bona fide field. I don't know that that piece of property is considered part of that bona fide field.
I wouldn't even go, I mean, it takes ten contiguous acres to qualify for farmland and firmment for taxes, okay? There are people renting land that are, you know, if they get six acres here and seven acres there, that wouldn't even, you couldn't go down to that level of trying to differentiate. And certainly, those lands are not going to be zoned AG. And there's a lot of parcels like that, eight acres here, seven acres here that are being farmed legitimately. It always is, and they do not qualify for even the farmland and firmment for taxes and so forth, because you got to have ten contiguous acres. So I'm, I'm not sure how you can define this particular piece of it instead of just doing away with about farm. Now, yeah, logging trucks and temporary construction entrances and things of that nature, we need to have some control of them. I mean, why are we even talking about farming operations? There's so few and far between.
And they're getting fewer as we develop residentially and there become fewer.
I'm sure this is a point of contention.
Maybe we should exempt them completely.
I was gonna say, I've got that language kind of in my head here. We say simply that temporary driveways for farm activities are exempt from the standards of this ordinance or from the requirements of this ordinance. And just leave it at that?
And I'd still use that three-dollar word of bona fide farm.
You would still leave that in there?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll leave that in there. And, because that is a state, there is a definition to that, that the state established. And then we still regulate logging, utility accesses, the other things that are listed and specified as temporary. We can still govern those and we just, we just won't do farm.
I mean, one goat, one goat don't make a farm.
He's right. I mean, essentially, those are very, very low-volume driveways. You typically don't have one or two pieces of equipment out of there, you know, in a year's time, you know, to till the field, plant it, and then collect the crop.
Unless you're having to move railroads or whatever.
I'd like to ask Bo though, having heard all of this, I think you get the gist of what we're looking to accomplish here. In your opinion, what would be the best way to craft that to avoid unintended consequences to the best degree possible and still achieve what we're trying to grow?
My opinion? The easiest way, to my mind, first of all, about ninety-five or more percent of the situations will be resolved by adding the language at the, at section three dash three point seven A seven. At the end of that introductory paragraph, it would just say, the requirements of this ordinance shall apply to driveways and road accesses installed after the effective date of this ordinance. It actually says shall only apply to those. That takes care of all, everything that's existing. And then, if you want, if it's, if it is determined to be the council's wish to eliminate the temporary permit and simply allowing that to proceed, whatever's left will be eaten up with that. And I think I'll take care of all of it, if that's what the council's wanting to do.
But we don't have to explicitly exempt farming?
For being tech, no, we don't have to. Well, this is gonna be said, if it's farming, we're gonna eliminate that for the farming operations. I think whatever is described there, where the temporary permits were gonna be required simply won't be.
But is that gonna be for everybody? Is this the language I just gave?
We said those agricultural uses.
Was that the language I just read to them? Was that sufficient to cover some of the exempting of the bona fide farm driveways?
The language I just read gets rid of all the ones that are currently in existence, which is probably almost all of them already.
But for new, this exempts us from having to look at and regulate new driveways that might be for agricultural purposes. Is that all right? And just look up, let's see if I can find it again. Temporary driveways for bona fide farms, I'm sorry, bona fide farm activities are exempt from the standards of, standards or requirements of this ordinance. Period.
Yeah, it sounds like that would do it.
Okay.
It makes it clear then.
Before you step away, and I may be missing it, but does it specifically talk about the logging trucks? So directly to, I mean, I want to make sure though that those activities that are.
We do specifically, yes, sir, we do specifically mention logging activities in here. As I, when we talk to the state, they have requirements above and beyond which require posting their signs during the duration of activity or relate to heavy traffic, heavy truck traffic coming into and out of the roadway. And those are, those are already found in NCOT requirements.
Last one in that paragraph.
I still, right there.
Trust me, I'm leaving on the farm view.
We are too. I mean, we, we realize that that was a sticky word. We just want to make sure that it would be.
Frank, let's move on to Marty.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything, any other comments? Questions? Well, I would propose.
Oh, Stuart's raised her hand.
I just, I'd like to make sure I have the right corrections and that's all. Bo, would you read yours again, please?
Yes, at the end, this would be appended to the end of the introductory paragraph and under section three dash three point seven A seven, a sentence that we read, the requirements of this ordinance shall only apply to driveways and road accesses installed after the effective date of this ordinance. And of course, I'll send you all of this, all you need.
So what about the farmer that comes in after yours?
And the farming one is, this is, this is retroactivity as to all driveway accesses. The language that Marty suggests would be used to deal with farming operations, whether previously existing or to be done in the future.
I've got that one there. And did you take out everything past that point? Just want to make sure, because there was something else on here about the issuance of temporary driveway permits. And I just wanted to make sure, you know, were they different from construction?
Marty, read, read.
I just want to make sure I get it.
The modification as we read it before was temporary driveways for bona fide farm activities shall be exempt from.
Okay, now, the only thing, and I, and I took out the rest of that sentence, but what about the part that says such permits?
And that was those language. Such permits shall be renewed.
Our language is in a whole different place.
Yeah, that's fine.
The initial, if you're looking at the screen, you see where it says new, I guess it would, that, the first sentence would remain as is, because that's granting temporary permits. And then the second sentence that begins temporary driveways for bona fide farm activities, and that's the language that Marty suggested, shall be exempt from the requirements of this ordinance or the terms of this ordinance.
Right. And then my question was, did the next sentence refer to the permits that were being issued before?
And I think it does.
And if that's the case, then I'm good to leave it exactly where it is. And that's what I wanted to clarify.
If that lasts, that be such permits language, the second sentence should probably come after the end of what we have right there.
Right after the permit.
In other words, that, that sentence is gonna say temporary driveways for bona fide farm activities are exempt, should follow it, should be at the very end of that paragraph rather than being.
Right, in the there. So that the permits actually refers to the part of the front. That's, thank you.
That's assuming that that's the motion.
Well, I'm getting ready to make that motion.
But I want to understand before you do, you're basically gonna strike the second sentence completely and then come back at the end of the paragraph. sentence completely and then come back at the end of the paragraph and put part of the back end, temporary driveways, bona fide farm activities.
Shall be exempt.
Shall be exempt. I'm clear with you. You're striking where it is.
And with that, I make a motion that we accept the ordinance two thousand thirteen zero zero four as an amendment with the provisions of the grandfathering and the provisions of the excluding of farming operations. That's my motion. I have a second. I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any votes? Okay. We do have a town line. Thank you, Marty. Appreciate your work on that. Appreciate the work of the planning board and certainly, that was something to be here also. Any other? One, Bo was included. Next item.
Okay, next item, a new business. First item in this section is the approval of the budget workshop calendar. This material is supplied to you in your agenda factor. And this had been previously discussed at our briefing and the recommended changes at that time have been incorporated into the calendar show.
I think we had moved those to starting the eighth of April.
The only thing I think that had changed is the meeting nights that reflected this Monday had originally been proposed to be on Wednesday in the same week, but due to some schedule conflicts and things, we backed the date back up, same week, just to Monday before the Wednesday.
That satisfied for everyone? New schedule? I think we'd have to approve that as a board.
Yes, sir.
Your motion?
Motion to approve budget workshop calendar.
Thank you. Second, Ben? Have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any?
Next item on the agenda is resolution two zero one three zero zero three. This is a resolution for the accepting of Carrington Oaks Drive in Cramerton Court. In Carrington subdivision, this town maintains roads in chapter thirty-one dash six of the town code. Since we discussed this agenda item last week, and I guess Attorney Bo Howth and staff has had the time and opportunity to discuss the matter further, there have been revisions to the, the resolution, and that revised resolution is in your packets this evening. Mr. Bo Howth is going to explain the resolution.
I'll be brief, I know a number of you already know about it. The situation arose, we're dealing with in this case Carrington subdivision, which was a newly constructed subdivision, and following, followed all the requirements of our major subdivision ordinance. And included in that, at the end of the subdivision ordinance is a provision that deals with what happens when you've done everything that you're supposed to do as a developer and you do, you accomplish the approval and recording of the final plat. And when that's done under this ordinance, the effect of it is, is that it, it has the effect of transferring the public, the proposed public areas and proposed streets to the town of Louisville automatically. They're proposed, they're dedicated at that time, and they are transferred into the town by virtue of that recording of the final plat. Last week, we were talking about the potential issue, what we thought was the issue, about whether there's a requirement that they, that the developer filed an application that has been previously developed for the, for the town in accordance with chapter thirty-one of the town code. And that is not the case for subdivisions that are approved and that follow the requirements of our subdivision ordinance. This application is more required in situations where we have existing streets and existing developments where those individuals may want the streets to be accepted by the town, and they have, and they were not part of this subdivision process in there. They require, now, they end up requiring many of the same things to be accomplished. You have to have a certification by an engineer that the streets meet the D O T standards, D O T minimum standards, there's a requirement of an asphalt lab test, there's a requirement of a warranty for fifteen months to ensure that the roads will stay and are in good condition or will remain that way during that period, and that a bond of the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars be provided. All of those things are required under the subdivision ordinance, they're also required under our town code provisions, but they apply in two different situations. And so, the concern that I think the council raised at the briefing meeting was that we might be treating folks differently that are in the same situation, and that we might be setting aside a requirement that this application be completed when in fact it's not required because of compliance with the subdivision ordinance. Based upon that, I think the resolution that you see before you now is appropriate, and you are, you will certainly not be in violation of town code provisions by considering that this evening. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
So in essence, were, were changes in the town code to agree to subdivision ordinance, is that correct?
No, sir, the town code provisions really apply to a different situation. And the town code which required this application, those are, those are in a situation where someone is seeking to have streets that are presently in existence, in perhaps in subdivisions or along roadways that are already in existence, brought into the town for maintenance that weren't, that weren't previously, that's for that situation. In the situation where someone comes in and builds a new subdivision, part of that process includes a requirement that if they want those things to be, those streets to be dedicated, then they need to be built to the standards, that the tests be done, that the warranty be provided, and the warranty bond be given. And when, and if those are done, and when the subdivision is approved, then the last, the final step in the subdivision approval is to file and record your, your final plat. And when that is done, when that recording is done, and it requires a sign off by appropriate inspections people, once that's done, then that has the effect automatically of transferring the streets into the town for town maintenance. What we're still doing here tonight is doing the resolution that frankly should have been done upon our learning of the recording of that final plat for this subdivision. We should have undertaken that at that time, perhaps the town wasn't aware, it was merely overlooked, or there were some other unforeseen circumstance, but this resolution should have been done at that time. And so that's what's being done tonight. That is required in order to formally bring the town, bring the roads into the town, so they'll be along the, among the list of streets that are official town streets, and then of course, there's the ordinance that deals with setting speed for that area.
Bo, I may be missing it here, but when that final plat is filed, what timetable does that start? In other words, they could, they'll file their final plat before they build out a subdivision most times, right?
Well, that, yeah, that has got to be a condition of being able to start building.
And that's the reason we're, we're got the twenty-five thousand dollar bond, if you will. What timeframe is starting there? I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is if, if we're going to go off to file the final plat, and that can be done when only one house is sitting there for a seventy-five house subdivision, and they don't sell the other seventy-four lots for three years, can they get their twenty-five thousand back?
They can.
Huh?
They can.
And then they come in and tear up the roads and rires.
Well, tearing up the roads brings potential liability for having done that.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, construction trucks come in and out to build the other seventy-four houses.
Right.
That's what I'm trying to wrap, you know, wrap around at this point.
I think a couple of things, in the timetable, there was an effort to establish an appropriate timetable for these, and I thought was the fifteen months was an appropriate timetable for getting a substantial number, most, all of the, of those brought in, you know, those built, those houses built. Whether that's accurate or not, could be left for another day. Instead, the ordinance provides it that way right now. But again, if somebody comes in thereafter and the construction truck, you know, tears up the streets, well, there's potential liability for having done that, to which the appropriate people would be, could be held responsible.
See, I think the way Winston does it is, there's a, there's a top cap that goes on the roads, they don't put the top cap on, they don't allow the developer to put the top cap on those roads until a certain percentage of build out is done.
Well, I thought that's what we had in place.
I thought so too, Fred.
Yeah, and that's, you know, I guess what I'm getting at.
You're saying you can build out before that-
And I want to make sure that we're not overriding that by amending this, this town code. I'm not so sure that I see the language of how we're amended it in this particular.
And we're not, this, this does not, this resolution accepts those streets into the town. They do not, this, this resolution nor the ordinance do not purport to change any ordinances.
So what amounts to, if I understand it now, is that by, by the subdivision ordinance, they, at the time, at that point in time, they had finished or filed a final plat?
That's correct. They have complied with the subdivision ordinance.
They complied at that time, but we didn't, as a town, recognize.
We did not formally do the resolution to bring those two streets into town, even though they were effectively transferred by virtue of having complied with the subdivision ordinance. We should have done that, for whatever reason, whether it was not being aware that that final plat had been recorded, or oversight or otherwise, I can't speak to why that may have occurred, but the fact is, they, it should have been done, there was no requirement, as we kind of talked about this last week, that they submitted an application, that this application had submitted under these circumstances.
I think we may have two issues here. One is something we should have done back in two thousand six as a town, and the other is to make sure that, I think this scenario that Fred had just stated, that the final plat could, could trigger taking the roads in, but yet there could be majority of the subdivision yet to be built out.
I think that's, that maybe is something that, of course, the planners still here, that the planning board can take up. It's not, it's not technically on your, on your screen for tonight to look at, but I think what I'm hearing from you is that you're asking the planning board to take a look at subdivision ordinance with regard to that issue about build out before either approval or putting that, that final top cap, an asphalt on.
Didn't the previous one not do that when we put it rich pressed?
I can't answer that.
I thought it was too.
That there was a, rich, rich presses had to be a certain build out before we would even accept it.
Two things, we may already have that, or it may have been in the approval of the subdivision, irrespective of this, and we may have said you have to do that.
I guess one of my basic questions right here, Mike, is you've highlighted yellow under the heading for the resolution and updating chapter thirty-one dash six of the Louisville town code. What are we updating if we approve?
The list of streets. Thirty-one dash six has a list of all the streets that are in the town, and this is going to add the two streets. That's what it's going to update. It's not modifying the, the terms and provisions and requirements for street exemptions. It's simply, if you go to thirty-one six in the town code, you'll see a long list of all the streets in the town. After this, if this resolution is passed-
Now, this is more like the U D O major subdivision, D dash four H five, effect of approving the recording of the final plat. What, what does that where is mean?
Where the, the yellow portion there, that, that thus, excepted, you know, by, by acting to accept those streets, we're complying with the process that's contained in the major subdivision ordinance there. That D four H five is the last part of subdivision, subdivision ordinance.
That's in our town code.
That's in our U D O.
Our U D O.
The major subdivision ordinance is sect, is chapter D of our town, of our U D O. Two things are being done there in that where is. One, thirty-one dash six is add these two streets, Carrington Oaks Drive and Cramerton Court to the list of streets that are accepted into the town. And then we're simply acknowledging that, accepting that by doing that, that conforms to the acceptance process that's set forth in the subdivision ordinance. Subdivision ordinance says when you file your final plat, the streets come in. We're acknowledging that this is consistent with the requirements. We're not modifying the town code.
I'm looking at this list, the last one was Fountainbrook in two thousand and six, and you're telling me that basically we don't have any since Fountainbrook. So how many more subdivisions do we have out here since two thousand and six?
Fountainbrook was private. It wasn't.
But it's on this list.
This is streets.
Fountainbrook subdivision, resolution two zero zero six zero six five in two thousand and six.
I know what you're saying.
It listed as the town streets, but not town.
But not town.
Bill Lewis said it was private and street.
It lists all streets, yes.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got to ask, I've got to ask this one then. So this Fountainbrook, you just mentioned that it lists all streets. Then how is Carrington place, or Carrington Oaks Drive currently listed?
It's not listed at all in there.
It just doesn't exist in the world.
It doesn't, it's not listed in our town code as a street that we can do anything with, and until this resolution is actually passed, we can't put it in the code, in our town code. I did contact, just for your information, I did contact the city of Winston-Salem to see how they do handle this, and they don't even go through the formality of doing a resolution to get it into their code. Once they have done the final plat, they, it's just an automatic stat thing, and they go ahead and get it on the power bill. But I'm not sure exactly, they didn't tell me, because they have so many departments that are involved in it. And I did ask, well, how do you get it, you know, into your list? Because eventually it'll show up in the city's code, because they have to assign miles per hour on that street. But they have so many hands that they go through, it's just an automatic thing that goes through each department to get it where it needs to be, once that final plat has been registered.
Ours is a slightly more formalized process.
Yes.
Do you have any other questions, comments from the council or attorney?
No.
But I got some more questions, but not to vote. And I guess the next good question we need to get to the board on is this defect that we spoke about next to the curb that we're out in the large codes. Are we in on that as far as what's-
We have a worst case price estimate on that when developed. Worst case, and this is worst case, is forty-five hundred dollars.
And in addition to that, I was a little bit concerned about where the signage is. We've got the entrance and the exit. The exit sign, it seems to be fairly rippled up as far as asphalt there. Is that going to need repairing in the near future?
Not much.
But pretty rough.
One else? Um? So we understand, again, that accepting these two streets, basically, we accept them when we finalize the plat.
They were, they were effectively transferred into the town when the final plat was reported. That's right. This is the resolution, you can put it on a list, streets.
So it's not to accept them into the town because they're already in the town?
That's correct.
Correct.
That's correct.
So this is really, in essence, it's right or wrong? Is that what they say?
We would have done it at the time. It's doing something that's perhaps should have been undone earlier.
That's what I'm saying. It's, we're, we're correcting and oversight.
We feel, we do feel like this would probably have had to been done, that this would have been the kind of thing that you would have done right after the final subdivision plat was reported, after the bonding had been placed and the certifications were done.
Okay. We're down to then the resolution itself, accepting, uh, I guess these, uh, streets, not into the town, but accepting them into what, the thirty-one dash six listing? Is that, that really what this ordinance or resolution is about?
Yes, sir. That's what it's about.
I salute. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
You have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay. That'll be unanimous, uh, approval. Uh, next is the ordinance, uh, two thousand and thirteen zero zero one, which, uh, assigns the speed limit, uh, to these streets.
Yes, and now it's assigned speed limited according to the ordinance. It's twenty-five miles now.
Any discussion?
I want the adoption of that ordinance.
Have a motion by Councilman Lawson, second.
Say it.
Any questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Uh, before we go into this next resolution now, I think we need to give some very straight and direct direction maybe to, to the planning board or maybe to the planner. I don't know that, uh, how far this needs to go, but, um, we, we need to revisit this, uh, finalizing the plat and this taking in the roads. Am I correct on that?
I think so.
What, what would be the, um, preferred, uh, course of action there?
I think the, the, uh, I think it's the easiest thing is to, to direct our attention to where we need to be reading up on the current stuff ourselves before we provide any direction for it. Everything may be great. We just don't know it. I mean, Tom probably knows the, all the town code.
Well, no.
You don't want to get that, but I certainly don't, you know.
I like what you're saying, though. No, I think you're exactly right.
Before we provide any direction, we need to educate ourselves. My, that's the first step, you know what I mean?
And then, then I think once we do that, I'd like to see, uh, Bo and Marty. Uh, since, since we're going to direct this, I think it's important for us to A, find out what it is we're going to direct, and then B, let Bo and Marty know and let them craft that document and let us see it so that we don't send the planning board off on some wild goose chase where they might come back with something that's not what we're looking for.
Yeah. That's sort of what I was trying to, you know, also, but let's, let's, let's get up to speed first before we start providing directions.
While you're doing that, I suspect, I don't suspect, I know what I'll be doing, which is going to be taking a look at this. Uh, even without your direction to do it, I'm going to take a quick look at it. I think that's okay. Uh, but is the concern that we have with regard to the, making sure the street's remaining in good repair while the rest of the place is being developed out?
Yeah, if, if we're going, if we're going to key off of the filing of the final plat, and I think I understood you to say that that could happen in essence before they ever build the first house, because they would need that to get certain permits and things of that nature. And, you know, I, and I'm more concerned about the build-out down the road and the damage that may occur that we may or may not have a bond for by the develop, developer. So if that starts the timetable, that's where the concern I think for me comes in. That is, you know, in, in a sour economy, it may be five, six, seven years before you get to seventy-five percent build-out. And, uh...
Well, then it all needs to be wrapped.
Yeah, yeah. And it, it may, it may already be there, because I remember some things that we have discussed with some of the other ones about certain percentages and, and things of that nature. And that's the reason I say we need to come up to speed ourselves before we start providing, you know, some directions for it again, you know?
Maybe they can send that up, uh, to us on our pads and then we come back to the briefing in March. Uh, we can talk a little more about at that point, if we feel comfortable with going and giving some direction to Bo and Marty.
Um, I think you should, you should already have the UDO on each one of your iPads and you want to, um...
I'd rather not have to go finish.
I didn't tell you we're excited.
Awesome. With this kind of action, I think it's appropriate.
It's sort of like, it's in the Bible.
I'll, I'll.
The front. I don't write it there, whatever. Basically, um, appreciate.
So you want to set up section D to everybody?
Well, yeah, section D, but I think we're looking more that, uh, we'll be informed of all aspects of this, uh, at our next briefing. And then we can, we can make direction from there.
The subdivision UDO piece and the town code piece.
I'm sorry?
I think we're talking about the, the UDO subdivision section and the town code.
Code section. And that's, that's what I was saying. Um, the UDO section is on large subdivisions. So I was just going to send you that information because all of that process is actually in that, you, you have to go through that section so you can see what the process is and where it boils down to. So I'll send that to you.
That'd be great.
Okay.
But, uh, our attorney and, and our town manager, you've got the gesture of, of what we're asking for from the, um, council.
Okay.
Zach, your next group now, right?
We will, uh, we'll go to the next item, item C, ten C.
Okay. The next, uh, item C is resolution twenty thirteen zero zero four. This is for the resignation of Tony Smith from the Stormwater Education Committee.
I don't move adoption of resolution zero zero four.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that resolution passes. And now we go to D.
D is ordinance twenty thirteen zero zero five. And this is for the amendment to the capital projects ordinance for maintenance facility Jack Warren Park. Ms. Bruce, would you care to go through?
Okay. Um, originally, the ordinance was just to prove to provide, um, uh, work in constructing a maintenance facility. And we are needing tonight, uh, as so desired, to include under that project ordinance, a playground expansion. And we are also changing the figures that were originally there for expenditures to incorporate expenses for that project of, of the expansion. Um, basically, the project estimate for the expansion is twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty, which will be made part of this, uh, capital projects fund. And you can see the breakdown, um, with that, the, when you, we also had to go back and modify the construction of the maintenance facility, um, from its original because you're using part of those funds. Whatever funds are left after this project stay in that project file until needed.
So basically, this is what we agreed to both at, uh, our planning retreat and at, uh, our briefing, uh, of this past week.
That's correct. Um, we just moved it forward, um, to expedite the process so that we could get busy on it. And, uh, we had some quotes that were good for certain length of time, so we're going to get back to using that.
Kathy, I just want to make sure I'm clear. In our capital reserve fund for the Jack Warren Park, there's currently a balance of fifty-five thousand, what person?
Not the capital reserve. This is a special project ordinance that was just set up to construct the maintenance facility. And you have to have a balanced budget in a project fund. So we had moved, originally moved funds, um, from the municipal buildings and land capital reserve over into a project fund to construct the maintenance facility. And that amount was fifty-five thousand dollars. And then we had, under the expense side, we had construction of the facility, fifty-five thousand. So now, instead of construction of the facility for fifty-five thousand, because we're using part of that fifty-five thousand for the expansion, that reduces that one line item down to twenty-five thousand, three seventy. The rest of the three line items, equipment rental, the contracted services and supplies will go for the expansion of the playground. And you still have a balanced prop capital project.
But you can follow.
Think as much, I'm sure. I, I just didn't get, I didn't.
I'm trying to follow. I know you, I know you got it laid out right, but the project itself is twenty-nine, six, thirty.
That's correct.
Okay. I maybe I should ask that question first.
That's correct. And it still is.
There'll be some funds left out of, over fifty-five thousand.
Right. The twenty-five thousand, three seventy would be left over for the facility. However, that's because we had to amend the original ordinance. Um, out of that twenty-five, three seventy, there have been seventy-five hundred dollars worth of funds when we started that project initially.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, Fred?
No. I'll make a motion to approve this one. Lawson, give it time, but four, one.
I'll second.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Passes you now to sweep. Next item.
Okay. The next item is under administrative reports. The first item in this section is the events at Shalford Square and Town Holidays. What you will note here is that the town offices are closed on Friday, um, March twenty-ninth for Good Friday. And then our only activity, as you note this evening, gets into the month of April. And that is on April twentieth, which we, which we will have the first movie night kickoff. And that will be at Shalford Square at seven o'clock PM. The movie will be Dr. Seuss's The Lorax. And it starts at dusk. And that's it.
Okay. Any questions concerning the events of the, uh, town facilities? All right. Go to the next item.
Okay. The next is just for information purposes. Again, as we discussed last week, applications for board seats closed on January thirty-first, twenty thirteen, and, uh, council will be considering by vote those applications at their March fourteenth meeting. And then lastly, the, again, the announcement that Town Holiday twenty thirteen is coming soon and that will be on March twenty-seventh, two thousand and thirteen at the Corum Center in Raleigh, North Carolina.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
And we'll go to the very last item of this section, which is, uh, a motion for adjournment. Motion for adjournment. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.